I call the Planning Commission meeting for December 8, 2022 to order. We'll all begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jackie, we call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Ms. Small?
Absent.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Crocker?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting November 10, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
On tonight's agenda, we have three public hearings and we will follow this format. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this proposal will be given the opportunity. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so, or some people may just have questions, and we will try to get those answers. And with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a recreational facility at 8820 East Avenue. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up. Tell us a little bit about what you want to do on East Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Romberg, and I am a volunteer in kind of overseeing the building and the operations for the baseball program. We are nonprofit. We are the Menor League program, and it's a travel part of it. And we work a lot hand in hand with the city already with the fields, you know, with us in the summer, the coordination. We're trying to put in here a practice facility for our travel kids. Everyone in the program is a volunteer. We're, you know, we're trying to pretty promote safety for the kids, develop and sportsmanship, building character, team play, and all that with the competition of other businesses in the area that do baseball. We are going to use the facility very little during the eight months of the year. The main part of the facility will be used in January, February, and March. And our hours will be generally between five and nine in the evening, so after when our neighbors are all done, and on weekends as well. We have currently 11 teams consisting of 11 to 12 players in each team. We have three or four volunteer coaches on those teams. And I say volunteers, they are the parents of the players. Our coaches are, like I said, all volunteers and parents. They also have coaching certificates. They have certain certifications. They have to do the work with the kids and in the facility. We also have purchased a couple months ago an AED to be in the facility as well and mount it in there. It's something that the president and we got the purchase, and it's something we kind of want to use for Garfield Park as well during the summertime. But in Garfield Park, the fire station is very close, so it's not like it's mandated. But it's just something nice to have for the kids, in case of emergency. And our coaches will go through training on it as well. Again, our usage, you know, we're after hours, five to nine at night, and our usage is going to be very, very low during the summertime, hardly, none at all. I mean, if we get a rain out in the summertime at a league game or a tournament game, they may come in and use the batting cages, but that's it. I mean, it's very, very little use, hardly at all, during the months of the year. And the facility is just offered to our kids. We are not soliciting or going outside for outside rentals to come in. It is strictly for our kids. That's about the thrust of it. You know, we're just trying to really be competitive and keep men or kids in our men or program. And that's one of the ways we're doing it, is trying to design a good travel program and good coaching.
Thanks. Could you spell your last name? And then can you give us an address?
My home address or the facility?
Either or.
8820 East Avenue.
All right. Hold on one second. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Any, will you please come up? Give us your name and address.
My name is Jeff Elley, 7608 Scottsdale Circle here at Menor, Ohio, 44060. I'm the president of Menor Baseball and have been for the last seven years going on, eight years. And just to reiterate what Coach Romberg has said, we're just operating in a very competitive environment with for-profit organizations at our door. There are few organizations left that have the organization that we do and what we do for our youth. I mean, the league's been in operation for going on 38 years. It is the house league here at Menor. We work very closely with the city and have had a tremendous relationship. And it's just another step of being competitive for our youth and building that character we want for our kids.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak against? Now, we have received a couple letters, and we have, as a board, we've all read them. Okay, this public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman, other than the nine conditions noted.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the nine conditions.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Very much appreciated.
Number two, we have a conditional use permit to allow a recreational facility at 8812 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Please come up, give us your name and address, and tell us what you want to do on the facility portion. We'll wait to do the financial school portion of it at number two. So let's just talk about the recreational portion.
Hi, my name's Ivan Alvinato. I'm an entrepreneur and author. I'm originally from the Bronx, New York. I moved here about 10 years ago, and the cost of living is really good. There's a lot of opportunities in Ohio. And once I noticed that, I tried my best to take advantage of it. As far as this is concerned, I really want to pass on everything that I learned the hard way over to children. I wrote a book called Head Start to Riches. It became a bestseller on Amazon. I created a curriculum for my children, also called Head Start to Riches, that incorporates a board game, and it teaches them financial literacy. The reason why I bring all that up is because I want to take the financial literacy and combine it with the boxing. I know it might seem like way off, like this just doesn't make sense, and it's going to be hard to market, too. So honestly, I'm probably going to market it as just a boxing facility to grab the parents and the children, but then hit them with the financial literacy when they're already there, because it's just too much to process. The boxing comes into place because it's one of those things where, as an entrepreneur, there's so many things you have to overcome. You're constantly facing adversity. You have to learn, you know, discipline, consistency, all the stuff that is right there in boxing. And boxing's a one-on-one sport, you know, it's not a team sport, just like entrepreneurship. So when you're learning to become a boxer, even if it's not professional, just training, you have a relationship with the coach. And that coach, in order to be a successful coach, you have to like peel layers of that child to be able to get through to them. And once they do that, and they're able to teach the child to listen to them and to trust them, they have the ability to teach them anything else. So the idea is to have them come in for the boxing, learn a skill, learn all the other entrepreneurial skills that come along with boxing, like I said, discipline, you know, consistency, all that other good stuff. And then while they're there, maintain that same relationship and have that coach turn into a financial literacy teacher. And because I have a curriculum that's a turnkey, you know, turnkey process, I don't have to worry about the boxing coach having experience or some type of degree to be able to transfer that information. It's a turnkey process. I don't know if you heard of Percy Miller? He goes by Master P. He's a multimillionaire. He endorsed my product. The product will not be for sale at the facility. It will simply be offered as an additional course. There aren't going to be any changes to the floor plan. It's pretty much a 2,000-square-foot, cut down the middle. One side it will be for boxing, and there won't be any sparring. It's just fitness, learning all the fundamentals. And then the other areas, they have two offices there, and those offices I plan on converting into a classroom. And to convert it into a classroom, all I'm doing is putting tables and chairs. So I really didn't know what to do in terms of the layout. I kind of just like went on paint and just whipped something up real quick. But it's going to be challenging, but I'm, you know, I'm open to it, and I think it's going to be really good. I think every child deserves a good head start. And I believe in the school system, but they are dropping the ball in that area. It's not a requirement as far as financial literacy is concerned. So this is just one more option for parents. And then I'll just finish up by saying that this is going to be an after-school program, so it's not going to be during, you know, morning time. It's going to be primarily from like 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and then by appointment only on weekends. I would love to be in the position to access grants and whatnot, but that's a whole nother conversation. Other than that, I'm pretty much done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anybody wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? This public hearing is closed. Kathy, anything from the administration?
No, we would just note under item two, we specify that this is recommend, that this is for limited to boxing fitness training, and that boxing masters shall not be held within the space.
Anything from the commission members? With that, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve with the four conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Just have a question. Does, we're calling it a school. It's really in a kind of an instructional program.
Yeah.
Does it require any kind of certification or licensing?
No, it doesn't.
So it's just strictly your...
I'm using a curriculum that teaches financial literacy, but it's not even through a book. It's through a game, and the parents will be there at the facility because, you know, you need a parent to be able to explain some of this information. I want them to take it home and to use it together. So, yeah, no, there aren't any specific licenses. I have a degree in accounting. I'm telling you, they don't, you don't need anything in terms of this.
You have to explain compound interest after that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve with the two conditions.
Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it.
Can I get a motion to remove from old business off the table the 2023 meeting schedule?
So moved. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Kathy, the long-awaited schedule. Anything from the administration?
Nothing, other than what you see in front of you.
Any discussion? Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Number five, new business, an architectural reimaging of a commercial building, Jets Pizza at 6854. That applicant wants to table that. Can I get a recommendation to table?
Move to table.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Remember, guys, save this for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Don't pitch it. Site alteration of a car dealership at 8494 Tyler Boulevard. I see that applicant's here. Please give us your name and address. Tell us what you want to change.
Kurt Hanson, Justice of Menor, 8494 Tyler Boulevard, Menor, Ohio. We're here tonight. We want to make a modification to what we had originally had submitted and approved back several months ago. We are now going to keep the front cone of the reconditioning center at 8490 Tyler Boulevard. With that said, and too, keeping that, we also want to keep the existing entrance as well to the dealership, basically with the reconditioning center there. That was the, what we had originally submitted into, keeping that existing entrance as is, and then also having the new one for the, on the Far East over there that we'd already had as well. Through conversations back and forth with the city and planning, we have kind of made a modification to this, which I think I saw you had up on there before, which now is to the existing entrance there. We are going to redo that to make that now 28 feet wide, to meet the city standards for a, basically entrance for truck access, and then we're going to take the entrance to the Far East for Genesis and take that from a 30-foot down to a 24-foot drive entrance, basically for passenger vehicles. See, that one is for vehicles only. That is not for any type of truck deliveries at all, but there will be box trucks coming in and out of the entrance there next to the reconditioning center.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
As Mr. Hanson noted, we've been discussing the proposal with the applicants for the past week and feel that the modification of the center drive to truck-only access will hopefully eliminate the concern or limit the amount of traffic that goes through that access drive with proper signage, and then reduce the new drive that's at the eastern end of the site. It was originally proposed at 30 feet, which is well beyond our maximum, our required minimum for two-way access for a standard drive. So with those changes, we would like for the Planning Commission to consider a modification to the proposed number-two condition. And I've put together some language that basically says what I just said a little bit more long-windedly, but I'll read it as, again, as a recommendation. The existing central access drive shall be limited to truck access only with proper signage provided. The central drive shall be improved to meet the required width of 28 feet for truck deliveries, and the proposed access drive at the eastern end of the site shall be reduced to 24 feet as required for standard two-way access. And the rest of the condition would remain. The updated plan shall be submitted with the update, with the next submittal.
Thank you. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Is there any reason to anticipate that the police and the fire would have any issue with these, with this alteration?
No.
Because they haven't seen it yet?
No. No.
This appears to be allowing them to have the access to the site they require?
Correct.
If there's any problem with that, would this come back to this committee? I mean, if the police or fire have an objection to something?
They didn't indicate any objections to me.
Oh, okay, so they've seen it? They've seen it already?
We discussed it, yes.
All right. I just want to check because they're important inputs.
Thank you. Anything else? So we will change that condition, number two, what Ms. Mitchell wrote, and you have a copy of that.
I do.
You're on board with all this? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the six conditions?
Second.
And number two is amended. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
We have a final subdivision plat for Echo Hill Manor to create 35 residential sublots at 8180 and 8188 Garfield Road. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Please come up, give us your name and address. Talk about the project a little bit.
Charles Andrews, 8793 Pheasant Lane, Kirtland, Ohio.
Do you want to speak about the project at all, or?
Excuse me?
Do you want to speak about the project at all, or?
Um...
Give us a little...
Well, subdivision that's been before council and so forth, and involved in some litigation and stuff, and a settlement agreement was entered into, and we're submitting the subdivision pursuant to that settlement agreement. And our engineers began to develop development plans with the city and do all the things that are necessary for calculations of the storm sewers and the underground and all that sort of thing. And hopefully, we've conformed to everything that's required of us, excepting, our engineers still got to complete, there's a list in your staff report of items that need to be finished, and I think he's already started, and he said tonight that he's approximately 75% completed with addressing those issues. But he will be doing that after this meeting.
Thanks. Dusty, do you want to say anything?
Just...
Or give us your name and address?
Yep. Dustin Keeney with Polaris Engineering and Surveying, 34600 Chardon Road, Willoughby Hills, 44094. And as Chuck said, we're working on the surveying and civil engineering and plating for the subdivision, and we've read through all of the staff comments, and there's nothing in there that we feel that cannot be addressed as part of the final engineering and the review process and the standard review through the city engineer's office. So if you have any technical questions, I'm happy to answer them, but otherwise, I didn't see anything that stood out.
Thank you. Kathy, anything from the administration?
I just had a comment. We did receive the landscape plan yesterday. We haven't fully reviewed everything, but with regard to the two entrances, there were supposed to be landscape features, and obviously, there was some landscaping shown on the southern entry point, but nothing on the northern entry point. And it would be nice to see some landscape features on that entry point as well. That would be our recommendation initially, so.
Thank you. Joe, could you just give a little, I guess, backstory on, you know, why we're to this point and what we're actually voting on tonight? Because it's really pursuant to a settlement that was done between... If you could just give us a Cliff Notes, I guess, yeah?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this, the matter was the subject of litigation. Ultimately, it was, there's a settlement agreement, and the property has been rezoned to RVG pursuant to this development plan. The preliminary plan was already approved as part of that rezoning. So this is final review. As the commission is aware, it's to flesh out all the technical details necessary to get this platted and go to permit. So again, in terms of conformity with the settlement agreement, nothing's jumping out. Obviously, the applicant, if it has any exceptions relative to some of the conditions, now's the time to hear about that. We did note that there were a few items. I think the commission, the administration called out, you know, that one area in the, what's the southwest corner there, and whether or not that should, whatever that improvement might be, and whether or not the applicant is interested pursuing that. The recommendation is from the administration that there not be any improvements in that open space. The landscape features were really kind of left open-ended. The settlement agreement did allow for them, and other than that, it was sort of a technical issue to be worked out, and the only condition in the settlement agreement is that approval will not be unreasonably withheld relative to the proposal. And obviously, the administration, I think, wanted to have some dialogue tonight about whether or not it could kind of have like a sort of a mirror image on the, on that one entry point into the subdivision. So aside from that and all the various technical aspects, that's about all we have on our end. Thank you.
Thanks.
So if I can interrupt, that improvement thing on the corner, that little square thing, the only reason that's included in the subdivision plans is, I think inadvertently, the attorneys, when they adopted the settlement agreement, it was attached and it was on the plan, but we don't have any intent to build anything there.
Yeah, I remember, I was on the board, and I believe that was discussed as a pavilion.
Originally, it was, right.
But it's not going to be built.
No, it's not.
So from plans moving forward...
We'd be happy to remove that.
Remove it.
Yeah.
And, but I guess the path going back to there...
That's going to be removed. There isn't any.
So the path between nine and 10, not there either?
Well, that gap is going to be there. That's...
There won't be a sidewalk.
There won't be a...
There won't be a sidewalk to nothing, basically.
Okay.
I guess I would question, how's that going to be maintained, then, if you're going to have that area? Is that going to be a maintenance issue for the HOA?
I'm sorry, I'm a...
How is it going to be maintained, that area?
Well, that would be, any of the open areas required to be maintained by the homeowners' association.
How do they get, how do they get to it, then?
As a practical matter, I imagine that that gap there, probably the homeowners on each side will end up mowing the grass, is my guess, but technically, the homeowners' association would be addressing the open areas.
Ms. Mitchell?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there anything from the commission members?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, the only other item, and whether it's a tactical improvement or not, the administration had suggested having a couple parking space pullouts where the CBUs are going to be, just if that's, you know, something that the applicant likewise thinks is advisable. Just like to make the record on that, just so there's no confusion when this moves forward from the commission.
No objection to that.
Thank you, sir. Anything from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I don't really have any issues with the, the plan is developed and approved. I have some technical questions I'd like to ask, and maybe the engineer might be the best person to answer these. They mostly have to do with topography and drainage. However, before I do that, I did spot something. There is a lot 17. I think the elevation that's there is wrong. It's just a typo, so I just bring it to your attention. One of the biggest concerns I have is the property line and the topography at the south end of the site. The topography drops significantly. Well, it's actually a cut in order to build a, build a series of housing locations, pads. That slope is so tight that the lines actually start to form larger lines. It's about 15 feet in some places, maybe more, and it's, based on some quick appraisal, it's, some of that slope is as high as 45 degrees. Other places, it's between 30 and 45 degrees. That's quite a large, steep slope. And I'll give you a chance, so let me... One of my, one of my concerns that are associated with that is that the pads for the building construction, usually, you try to swale around the pad so that the drainage doesn't come right up against your building. the pad so that the drainage doesn't come right up against your building. If you allow another four or six feet for swale away from the face of the pad, you're even making that even steeper, and there's, is, and I just quickly asked the city, is, are they required to do landscaping buffering on that side of the site? I know it's on the, the north side.
It's not required. No, it's only on the north side.
And why is it not on the south side, too?
It wasn't made part of the agreement. And it, you're, I mean, obviously, looking at the contours.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, because if.
You're at a higher point, and then you're going down.
Well, you're still looking right at the roofs of the, of the houses. I mean, you see the roofs, you don't see the house. Anyhow, it's, it's about fifteen feet. Now, that's quite a cut. It's been cut into an area that was much broader at the time and had trees and ground cover to stabilize it. My biggest concern is that they can't maintain, I mean, you can't, you can't use a lawnmower to cut the grass, it's too steep. I'm not sure you can grow grass on it. But I have another concern that is adjacent to this or connected to this, it's actually much more concerning to me. You've cut that slope right back to the property line. I understand what you're doing, but immediately adjacent to that property line, at the top on the adjacent properties, is a lake, okay? That lake, it's a retention, but it has water in it all the time. I'm just kind of nervous about the fact that you've got this lake up there, you've cut that slope back, there's nothing to protect it from erosion, and I can connect some dots together and get to be very concerned about what happens there, okay? Placement of the houses are fine, the pads are fine, but, but I don't see how you're dealing with the runoff at that point, or how you're stabilizing that slope.
So, the drafting on the, on the one that you guys have probably leaves a little bit to be designed, as far as some of the line work. We have reworked that line, that slope is set up to be at a three-to-one slope, so three-foot vertical, for every three-foot, I'm sorry, one foot vertical, three foot horizontal. So it, and, and from a three-to-one slope is, you know, in our engineering world, an acceptable slope, it's, it's mowable, it's maintainable. So there, there is a lot of topography there, but, but it will.
What is the distance between the back of the pad and the property line? Sorry to ask, I, there's no dimensions on this, so I can't, I can't ask. Because that, you know, just the amount of doing the math, at some points, you have elevations of seven thirty-four up to seven fifty-one, that's seventeen feet. Three-to-one would make that more, requiring more space than you have behind the house.
So the, as drawn, the rear of the pads are fifty feet from the property line?
Okay, so you're talking about the max sixteen feet, right? Give or take, sixteen.
Right.
Okay, now, now that's fine, but that's still, how do you, I mean, that's hard for someone to walk on, straight up the slope. I mean, not a ten-year-old kid, but a, you know, fifty-four-year-old guy with a lawnmower, that's, that's pretty steep. And then how do you deal with, with, you're going to plant grass on that, how are you going to stabilize that slope?
I mean, we, I mean, three-to-one slopes are of very standard, you know, in the engineering world, I mean, that's, you don't go, go steeper than that, or, you know, to your point, you can't, you can't mow it, but, I mean, three-to.
I mean, you're right at the, you're right at the limit of that.
Right.
That's the upper limit.
And I will say, the pads, as drawn, are, the pads are fifty-foot wide by sixty-foot deep. The odds of, of the homes actually being, you know, having a three thousand square foot footprint and being that deep, right.
Yeah, but from a planning point of view, you don't know where the house is going to be.
Right, right.
Now, that goes back to my first statement, if you allow four or six feet of swale space to keep this drainage away from the face of your building, you're now over the three-to-one slope. Because you don't have fifty feet, you have forty-four feet.
Well, I mean, I would be happy to put, you know, put a notation on the plan that the maximum slope to, you know, those backyards would be, would be three-to-one, and when the site plans are reviewed and approved through the, the engineering and building department, you know, those, whoever buys those lots would be notified when they, when they purchased the lot that the slope can't exceed that, and they would have to be able to build something that fits into that envelope that they can, can comply with that.
All right, I mean, I guess, you understand my concern.
I do, I do.
You're right, you're right at the feasibility line.
Right, I do.
Somebody wants to put a patio out their back door, there's no room to do that, unless they start building retaining walls.
Right.
Well, that's some kind of a stopgap, they could do that.
Right. No, you, you could terrace it, yeah, but then that adds to the, that's the homeowner's responsibility. I'm trying to see it to what level some of this stabilization or planning might be part of the development cost. So, all right, let's, let's, if we put, if we put conditions in there, in the, in the development plan, that state that, that at no place can you be more than a three-to-one slope, which means that in some places, you're not going to be able to do that, it may require retaining walls to build a house. Because if you also, you also need to maintain some distance off the, off the house for drainage.
Right.
You can't just bring that, that water down against the, you know, somebody might have a basement. I'm not sure I'd put a basement there, but, but if you had a basement, you have to swale the water around the drip line of the house and, and, you know, and be able to get it through between the houses without it, it being up against the house.
Sure.
Otherwise, you're, you're just creating a disaster.
Absolutely, yep.
That's one situation, and if we can get the language in there that protects these residents relative to that slope and drainage, then I think that's fine. The other, another location where I have a little concern is on the opposite side, with the houses that face right next to the, the retention pond. And, and that concern is, is, it also drops off quite quickly, but that's dropping away from the house, so I don't have, you know, from a drainage point of view, I don't quite have the same concern. But I do have the concern about, and I use this example, and I've been told not to use it, but I'm going to say it anyhow, you could stand at the back of your sliding door, your, your dining room, you could take a basketball, you could drop it out the door, and it would roll all the way into the detention pond. There's nothing to keep anything from, from going right into the detention pond. So, I mean, I'm not asking you to re-engineer it, but I think it's, it's absolutely required that that would be enclosed with a security fence of some kind, so that you don't have something as simple as that occurring. And I don't know if that creates any other issue, but I think you can't, you can't have a situation where it just slopes from the house right into the detention pond, from a, from a.
The pond?
From a safety point of view.
I mean, it's going to be a web, it'll, it'll have water in it. I mean, it'll, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be water there, and, and you understand what I'm alluding to, I don't want to make a, any, blow it up to more than that, but, but I think there needs to be some security fence or something built so that it just doesn't slope right into the water.
Well, I mean, that's going to be up to the resident. Some residents might want to walk over a little bit.
I think this is, I think this is a safety concern.
I don't know.
I think this is safety. I mean, you, you know, you understand the illusion I'm making, you drop a ball, it goes right into the water.
Right, and this isn't going to change a ball rolling down the hill, but just the, the slopes in that instance, from the rear of the homes down to the water surface are actually a little bit, they're at four-to-one. Obviously, a ball's still going to roll downhill.
Basketball, it'll, it'll end up right in the water.
Right, right.
Okay, so my concern is that it's a safety issue, that's all, is that you put a safety fence around that security, or that, that pond, so that, so that a child doesn't go into it.
If some of these people put patios and stuff behind their house, then there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any slope.
Right, they could put, they could flatten it out and do, and do patios with, with little landscape walls.
Ms. Mitchell?
I did talk to the city engineer today specifically about the slopes, and their office reevaluated, they had, they had looked at the plans through their standard review, they reevaluated them today. To Dusty's point, the three-to-one slope is an acceptable slope, and.
It's the maximum.
Yeah, and the city engineer specifically said to me, they are not concerned with the distance and area to the detention pond, on the, on the, on the sub.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about the distance, I'm concerned about the safety of isolating it from the properties.
He didn't raise any concerns to me with regard to that, but if you want, you know, their engineer to take, to, to look at it further with our engineer, I mean, that's certainly an option, but.
But I don't think there's an argument with the, with the example I gave, right? I mean, unless you put something to keep people from, I just don't think it's a safe thing for, for the neighborhood to have a situation where the ground just slopes right into the water from the back of the houses, without, you know, a fence or something from a safety. If it was a swimming pool, you'd put a fence around it, okay?
Mr. Zeman?
I, I guess the issue is really, you know, as Ms. Mitchell indicated, it, whether it's a safety issue or not, or whether it's a convenience issue, I mean, you could certainly have homeowners who, you know, have pets and they want to fence in their backyard, so now you've got some type of a safety fence, you know, right, abutting, you know, potentially a, a boundary fence. It really is well outside of, I think, what was originally contemplated. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, and I'm not saying the parties can't come to an agreement relative to some type of fencing, but it, it just seems like something that was maybe a little bit more specific to the, to the homeowners and their specific desires, as opposed to something that would go into what was contemplated to be a, sort of a natural area. Granted, it's a retention basin, but, most of these retention basins, whether you want to or not, they, they often get a lot of brush and scrub and stuff like that, or nicer plantings, but.
This, this will be holding water, right?
Correct. Now, with, from a safety perspective, with the new detent, you know, the new regulations and the rules as far as detention basins, around the perimeter of the basin, just under the water surface, will be what's called a safety bench, so there will be like a flat spot that, or a relatively flat spot that only has like, falls like a foot in the first ten feet, so that if somebody does step into the, they won't have as much trouble, you know, getting, getting out of it. And that's just a new feature that we're putting into all underground detention basins. I'm, I'm not saying that, that if somebody falls in there, you know, I'm, I'm not arguing safety with you, but by any means, I mean, anything could happen.
And it certainly becomes a liability to the homeowners' association, not to, not to have this, well, I don't know that I can even make that stipulation at this point, right?
Again, the settlement agreement did not contemplate any type of fencing around, you know, that area, any of the, any of the open space areas, to frankly, the contrary. I think if we're looking at an example, you know, there was specific attention to a natural plantings on the northern, on the northern buffer, where it would be adjacent to the Bell Glow properties. It may be a good idea, and it might be something to move forward with, but it seems like.
I just, I just think it may be unsafe, that's all. I mean, you don't have, because it's an open space, you don't have control about who's there, who has access to it, you can certainly approach it from the roadway, and it, you know, I, it becomes an ultimately a liability of the homeowners' association, but it would be the liability of the developer until, you know, in the interim. I'd still like to see some kind of safety measure to isolate that from them. I understand that it will disturb the natural look of the environment, but, you know, the fact that it's so, it's just downhill from the house, it just, you know, there's, there's just nothing to keep, I mean, my, my concern is a small trial, is that there's just nothing, it goes right down to the water, it's, there's no, nothing that intercepts that. Now granted, a homeowner can put up a fence, he can put up bushes, he can do lots of things.
They're probably not going to put up a fence, they're probably going to put decks and patios.
Right, but that doesn't, that doesn't resolve the issue of something happening in the pond.
Those are going to be flat, they're not going to be curved, you know.
No, I understand, I do understand. Well, I'll, I'll kind of leave it up to the commission. From a planning point of view, I think from a safety point of view, I'd like to see a fence around that. Now, I just have a couple other questions. Like if I look at lot number twelve, and, and then the diametrically opposite one, lot number thirty-five, thirty-five has a, from the main, from the front of the house to the corner, it's a thirteen-foot drop. Lot twelve is a twelve-foot drop, from the front to the, to the lower level in the back. What is anticipated in terms of how, architecturally, how are these houses going to respond to such a large drop on the property? More than a story below the entrance grade.
Is he talking about behind the houses?
Well, just from the main floor, to the grade in the back is a twelve and thirteen-foot drop. How, how do you compensate, I mean, that?
Right, so, so numbers twelve through nineteen, and then also twenty-eight through, through thirty-five are set up to be, they would be walkout basements, so the, so the grade at the, at the house, at the rear of the house would be down at the basement grade, so.
Okay, but you're talking about thirteen, that's more than a, that's more than a walkout basement. A walkout basement is ten foot down, you're in another three foot down.
Right.
Okay, well, I'm just pointing out that that's, I, I get a strong feeling that these things, especially number thirty-five, if you look, the, the grades are so close together that it just becomes a dark, a dark area there in the corner. That's pretty steep, that's beyond the point where you can maintain that. You, you can't maintain that with the normal grass cutting equipment or lawnmower, or, you can't even walk that. So, you know, when I look at slopes of that, that's more, I, I suggest it's more than three-to-one, in that short area. So I guess, can we, can we talk about the possibility that no slope within a site, within a, within a, a property will be more than three-to-one? As a condition of development?
I think that's, I think that's fair. I think, I mean, I think a three-to-one slope is.
Is the maximum.
Is the maximum.
So can we make that a condition? Because I see some situations that are occurring where the slopes, I believe, are more than three-to-one. And, and it's just about the future homeowner, not being able to maintain the property, not being able to walk around the house, you know, just, just be able to have access to his I guess that's, it's, it's all, it's all topography.
Right.
And I just want you to, I would just, you know, appeal to your professional concern that that, that lake, just above the property line, and the fact that that slope now has been cut back significantly, doesn't have trees holding it, doesn't have ground cover, I know you're saying it's no more than three-to-one, is that sufficient, that when we have the, the hundred year, when we have the hundred-year rain that occurs?
You saw the dirt from here, can't you fill that? Even though it's into the, even though it's into this area, that's a temporary thing.
We could fill further, I mean, we just have to look at impacting more wetlands, so it's a, it's a balance.
Well, this is, I mean, this is somebody else's lake, this is your lake.
Right, right, no, I understand, right.
Well, my concern, it's just my concern is, it's not the three hundred and sixty-four days a year, it's the one day a year we have a hundred-year rain.
Right.
That occurs every five years.
Right.
It's my joke, but, you know.
Right, I understand.
That, that, that floods to, you know, fills to its maximum, where's that water going to go? Is it, does it break over the top? Does it come down the edge? Does it go in somebody's dining room? Okay? I, I just see that from a planning and, and design point of view, as something that we really have to look at. It, it may require some structuring of that slope, that's all I'm trying to get at, okay?
Well, hopefully, they design their pond properly, too.
Well, you understand where I'm coming from.
I do, I do, absolutely, yes.
Okay. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zeman, are we past the point of conditions?
No, obviously, there's numerous conditions relative to, you know, getting the plan in conformity, you know, with the various code requirements to, for final approval and plating and permitting. It seems like the only, and that's why I wanted to highlight, though, a couple of the conditions, you know, the elimination of what we lawyers had no idea how to get rid of, the, the little square box over there, and, and obviously, the applicant has indicated that was just a holdover from, from our work. Likewise, I think the, you know, the two parking spaces by the CBUs, everything else, unless the applicant has, has some specific objection, seems like it's fairly, fairly in conformity with what you would expect to do in a final, final site plan. And then I think to Mr. Varga's point, it, it sounds like the applicant's in agreement for the, the sublots to, to maintain a, you know, no greater than a three-to-one slope. And if that's the case, then, you know, the parties are in agreement, and that would be, that would, I guess, be condition number ten.
And, and not, not to complicate this, but I would, I'd want somehow in this condition to acknowledge the necessity for swales, you know, offsetting from the, from the building pad to allow the water to go around the building rather than up against the building. So that may affect the slope, you know, situation, but you, you just can't bring this water from fifteen feet above right up against the house. It's, that's, I don't know, that, that's, I don't think it's almost a code thing, isn't it? State building, residential code? You can't just, you have to swale water around the building?
Well, I will just, I will just point out that, that the engineering department itemized a number of conditions.
Mm-huh.
That will be completely vetted and, and evaluated during the, during the engineering plan review, this is the plat approval, and so we want to, you know, obviously, give, give direction in any way we can, but at the same time, engineering will, will make sure that all of those things, from a technical standpoint, are certainly met.
Okay, well, I understand, and I'm not questioning their, their authority or their ability to do that review, but I just want to make, from a, from a plan point of view, accepting the overall plan, that those things are considered in, because they, the tolerance, dimensional tolerance here, especially along the south side, is so tight.
Right.
That if you, you require to have a four-to-six-foot swale space between the pad and the house, you are now above a three-to-one slope. And I'm not telling you how to resolve that.
Right.
But it needs to then be resolved in a different way than just spraying grass on it and hoping it grows.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from the commission members?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tatum.
Just a quick question, that open space, the block A, there in the northwest, I guess it would be, what is there right now, and how's that going to be left? It's called wetlands, but.
Right.
Which block A?
He's, he's talking about this, this whole quad. So essentially, that, that area, let me see if I have an aerial.
I know.
That area currently is, is essentially wooded, and it will not be touched.
Okay, so we're going to leave that alone. And then, I guess, to the administration, when we talked about, I guess, in the settlement, the landscaping along the north side of this, we stopped halfway down the, was there a reason why?
That's wet woodlands that we were just referring to, and again, as, as the applicant indicated, it's not to be touched, so.
So there's enough in there that shields and hides?
I don't know that you could disturb it with, at any, any, any mounding without disturbing the wetlands. I, I don't know that you can't, but that certainly would probably be a bit of a challenge. I don't know that you can't, but that certainly would probably be a bit of a challenge, because I, maybe the engineer can comment further as to whether or not that, that wetlands actually, you know, goes under the Bell Glow subdivision as well.
So, as far as we, that's just gonna be left there, it's treed and-
Correct. Along the, along the, there will be a swath along the north line that, that will be open, because we do need, that's where the outlet for the storm sewer for the site. When Bell Glow was put in, there was a 30-inch storm sewer stubbed at that, at that very northwesterly corner of our property, and that's ultimately, from a master plan perspective, where the water needs to drain to after it goes through the detention basin. So, there will have to be enough of a path cleared through there to get that pipe installed, but other than that, everything else in that northwesterly corner will remain as it is today, wooded, and, yes, wooded.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else? So, do you wanna add, do you wanna add a condition, or?
Well, I think, I think I do wanna add the condition that no, no slope on a, on a, on a plot will be more than three-to-one. Can we do that at this point?
Looks like we can.
Will exceed, no, no slope.
Will exceed, will not exceed three-to-one slope. That no location on a property will exceed three-to-one slope. And I don't know quite know what, you know, my, my desire would be to put a fence around it, but that's just me, I, I don't know if I, I'd leave it up to anyone else's input. I don't wanna be the only squeaky wheel.
Mr. Chairman?
To jump in, I'm gonna say, I don't really think the fence is necessary, I think the homeowners will have that option.
I do like the design of it, how you talked about, like, the step-down, but it's not a, not a detention, it's a retention pond, right?
Right.
Right, it's, it's always gonna have water.
And it will always have water, yes.
Right, and then, it'll surge on that bench wall-
Correct.
-and you'll have a, like, a wear wall that takes it out to 30-
Right.
-to Bell Glow.
Correct.
Okay. And that's adequate for this site?
Yes.
So, there'll be no water that goes into Bell Glow?
Nope.
And no water from the south street will go into this site?
Correct.
Unless we have a 500-year flood.
Right. Right, with the way, the calculations as they stand right now, in a 100-year storm event, that basin will fill up, and there will still be about two feet left before it would come up and over top, over top the, and at that point in time, we'll set it up where there's an emergency overflow that would discharge anything to the west into the, into the wetlands, so.
So, it's like two wears.
Right, so it's designed to handle the 100, still have volume left over, and then, obviously, if you get one of those 500-year events, it would direct the water to the west, and that was one of the city engineer's comments, and we'll, we'll do a little bit of swaling probably along that, that north line, just as, like, the third emergency, you know what I mean, to protect the folks to the north.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kirkovic.
Kathy made mention earlier about the landscape features required at both street entrances, does that need to be a condition? Or would that be addressed at the number three, which is the landscape plan should be in compliance?
We can add it, right?
Yeah, I guess that was sort of left hanging. I think the applicant's proposed one sort of improvement, and the administration was wondering whether they'd be amenable to sort of mirroring that, I guess, on both sides of that drive. It's really a question to, you know, for the parties to work out a little bit.
I don't know, we need four signs, but, I mean, you know, we could have at least maybe, you know, one sign at each, at each entrance, or just landscaping on the one, and the signs all on the, on the south side, you know, but just something there.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I would be fine with this signage at just one entrance, and just some sort of landscape feature at all four corners, let's call it, if that works.
Are you asking something?
Yes.
They're, they're wondering, they're wondering if, because right now, we're, the landscape plan is showing landscaping here, they're wondering if we could do a little, some little bit of landscaping at the other entrance, just to-
We're trying not to feature that particular road, we're trying to feature the other road as the main entrance.
Which one? Not featuring across from Norton?
More of a, more of an exit. I mean, people will go in there, don't, don't get me wrong, it's, it's a two-way thing, but we're trying to feature the-
West of Norton.
To hook up to Norton as the main-
The southern, the southern connection.
Entrance, and that, that being a subdued thing that would be less traffic. I mean, that was our thought.
Because you're gonna need something at that entrance, so as the vehicles come down Norton with their headlights on, you gotta shield it a little bit.
Well, there's gonna be quite a distance between the lots and the first house, I mean, that's for sure.
Yeah, but if you're going westbound on Norton, you gotta have some sort of landscaping there to shield those. Mr. Varga.
I have, it's just more just a question for clarification than, between the center area in the middle, where you have two rows of houses, and it appears that, I tried to look at the, the topography, I'm not quite, it looks like there's a drainage way between the houses on both sides. I'm not quite sure where it goes. Is that, is that an easement, is there an easement there, drainage easement? I see a dotted line, but-
There is, there is, right now, we're showing an easement that goes out directly west, out to, out to the road. One of the, the city engineer's comments, though, was they would like us to split that system up a little bit, and actually send a portion of it north, just, just to have a second, a second way for, so I believe they were thinking of a couple-yard drain strung together, and maybe go out between 24 and 25, and then there would be a gap in the pipe, and then, and then the structure would go-
Okay, so, in terms of future development by the homeowners, they would not be able to build into that drainage easement.
Correct.
That would be a limitation to any improvements they made.
Correct, right.
You just reminded me of another question I had, I should write these down, otherwise. It looks like along that southern border, and that's where my biggest concerns are with almost everything, is that there's a series of area drains, yard drains, that are somehow halfway up that slope. That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Correct, those have been moved, yes, those have been moved.
Okay, all right, all right, I just had a question about that, I mean, that would, those would wanna fall between the swale, coming off the, the house, or the wall of the house, and at the, at the foot of the, of the slope coming down.
Correct, that's one of the things that we worked on here in the last couple of days, was changing that.
And that's why ultimately leads to this one-to-three, because I think ultimately, some of the locations there, you're not gonna be able to get the one-to-three to the property line. I just don't think, I don't think you have enough room, that's all.
We'll study it some more.
Okay.
I agree.
Is there anything else? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Are we just at 10?
Is it 10 or 11 then?
We're at nine, I think 10 being no slope greater than three-to-one.
Yeah.
So, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to approve with 10 conditions, the 10th being no slope more than three-to-one.
Second. Jackie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kirkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mr. Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Save your packet number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that reminder, because that's very important.
Anything, Kathy, from, anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.